What's the delay on this? Our delay is...
It's usually 20 seconds.
Yeah, oh yeah, there's about a 25-30 second delay. Yes, it's live.
You watch it on TV? Is Ken watching it now?
Well, I wanted to make sure it's on TV. My son from... From Bellevue. It's not his house. He told me it's in law school.
Yep, we're not. Because God should be actually home. Okay, now it's six o'clock, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order. And we start every meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please stand in your house.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first we have public comment. If you're here to talk about something that's on the agenda, you'll be given a chance to talk to that, about that when we get to that agenda item. But if you're here to talk about something that's not on the agenda, now would be the time to come forward. All the way in the back too. I see somebody coming forward. Are you coming to speak? Or are you just coming to stand? I don't mean to embarrass you. Seat. No one's here to speak, okay. So we'll go on to the next agenda item and that's the room... The report of the mayor and city commissioner. So we will start down at this end with Commissioner Favalli.
Yeah, I just hope that everybody had a safe and happy Thanksgiving and Thanksgiving weekend. It was also a busy weekend here in Gaslight Village and we had the tree lighting ceremony and Small Business Saturday. So I want to thank everybody who came and participated and helped out with those events. It was a great weekend for everybody. I'd also like to congratulate the East Grand Rapids Girls Swim and Dive Team on becoming the 2019 Division III State Champions yet again. Congratulations to them, an amazing job, well done.
Mr. Zagel. Mr. Duncan?
I would just like to say that Public Works has done a fantastic job these last weeks between... Boy, heart goes out to them. We pick up snow, we pick up snow. And they are always out there and my kids have so much fun watching them from all these sidewalks. They just do a fantastic job. So wonderful job for Public Works, we have a great city staff.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hammer.
I would like to say how successful the tree lighting was. I really enjoyed being there and I really enjoyed Mayor Seibold and Rachel Ruiz singing all of their Christmas songs. They were wonderful. It was very festive, there was a really good turnout and my family really enjoyed it quite a bit. Everything from marshmallow roasting and Santa was there. We also had a fantastic dinner in Carolina, so it was just a lot of fun for everyone. Thank you.
Commissioner Miller.
Just briefly, I want to say how cool it was to say the Pledge of Allegiance and hear the crowd. A lot of us. That's pretty neat. And I suspect it was the children that sort of worked.
And Commissioner Walters.
Thank you. I just want to take a minute to acknowledge, I know a few people had some power outage issues this weekend. It's that season in East Grand Rapids unfortunately. It's part of one of the few drawbacks of this community, living in an older community with so many above-ground power lines. It is something we've talked about and looked at before. Every once in a while, people say, "Well, I don't bury all the lines." The cost of doing so is just exorbitant. We have explored that and there's just really no way, no way to tackle that in that type of way. So it's not that we're ignoring people's concerns, we're well aware of them. I think Doug does a fantastic job of doing what he can as a liaison with consumers with regards to those issues. But I hope everybody will do their best to manage, navigate the situation and certainly don't hesitate to contact the city if you have some specific concerns that we can try to help with. But I just want people to know that we're aware, well aware of the issue. We all live through it ourselves from time to time and are open to exploring other options for sure. It's not that we're not open to considering other possibilities.
And consumers is aware of it too. And Doug, you've been, you have a list over time of the amount of outages we've had and the reasons why. And we absolutely work with consumers on this and it is consumers that ask to handle this. But yeah, you're right, the cost is exorbitant. I figure if we put that all in and then wait, they'll have some sort of a new technology where you don't even need that. You don't spend a hundred and seventy million dollars. Doug, do you have anything? Okay. In Norway. And then next on the agenda are the, we need to have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held November 18th, 2019. May I please have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes of the meeting on November 18th.
Support. Any changes? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Okay, next is the report of Finance Committee on dispersment of funds. Payroll dispersments of $232,000, $234,001. County and school dispersments of $20,993.57 and total remaining dispersments of $221,888.78. And we would like to have a motion to approve this.
Motion to approve the report from the Finance Committee as indicated on our agenda.
Support. Any comments? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. And then I turn it over to Doug.
Okay, as tradition here at the City of East Grand Rapids, we have board change over elected officials. We have a recognition for those who are moving on from the board and then we'll follow that with swearing in of the new elected officials before they take their seats. So I'll head down and start with those who are heading out who want to follow me down. Okay, we'll start with City Commissioner Chad Zagel. Would you like to join me? Have anybody here this evening for photos? You guys come on down. Chad, I want to thank you for your service as City Commissioner from 2014 to 2019. And you've got to give it to your birth in the city. Thank you for your service. Ryan Miller, you're up next. So Commissioner Miller, I want to thank you for your services as City Commissioner for the City of East Grand Rapids from 2011 to 2019.
Mr. Redd.
And Mayor Amna Seibold, I want to thank you for your services, Mayor, to the City of East Grand Rapids. All you've done, serving as Mayor from 2011 to 2019. Thank you very much.
I shout out Aunt Emily in Bellevue in Washington. I noticed the scene worldwide. Washington is watching and I promised I'd do a shout out. Any of my other kids or husbands with grandparents are watching.
Okay, we're gonna start with Mayor Favalli.
All right. Do you raise your hand and be blessed? I do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State and the Constitution of the State and I will faithfully discharge the duties and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Mayor of the City of East Grand Rapids, County of Kent and State of Michigan, to the best of my ability.
And first floor. Anybody coming up with you?
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State.
And the Constitution of the State.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of City Commissioner.
Of the Office of City Commissioner.
Of the City of East Grand Rapids.
Of the City of East Grand Rapids.
County of Kent and State of Michigan.
County of Kent and State of Michigan.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Second floor, Mr. Hammer.
I do have children.
I do solemnly swear. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State and the Constitution of the State and I will faithfully discharge the duties and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of City Commissioner of the Office of City Commissioner of the City of East Grand Rapids, of the City of East Grand Rapids, County of Kent and State of Michigan, County of Kent and the State of Michigan, to the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. Thank you.
You should sign your own. And third floor, Mr. Hammer.
You're just a minute. I just always...
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State.
And the Constitution of the State.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of City Commissioner.
Of the Office of City Commissioner.
Of the City of East Grand Rapids.
Of the City of East Grand Rapids.
County of Kent and State of Michigan.
County of Kent and State of Michigan.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
All the new officials can take their seats.
Seniority.
Thank you. Welcome. So continuing on, before we do continue, I'd like to take a moment to personally thank the exiting commissioners, Brian Miller and Chad Zagel, as well as Amna Seibold for their dedication, years of service and dedication to the community we all love. And so thank you so much to them. If they're still here, I think I saw Chad and Brian on their back. Thank you so much. Next, it's my pleasure to welcome Commissioners Patla and John Ehrenhorst to the commission. And I'd also like to congratulate Commissioner Hammer after the election. I'm very much looking forward to working with each of you and with the entire commission. So, and city staff. So welcome and thank you. Does anybody else have anything to say?
We're just so happy that you're here.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, item number eight, is the First Lego League presentation.
Congratulations, everybody. It's exciting. My name is Terry Teseras and I want to thank the City Commission for letting these young EGR residents here in the first row present to you. They are part of a First Lego League team, a robotics team at Lakeside Elementary. And part of their competition that will be on Saturday is an innovation project. And that, and this is what they have come up with. And it is a competition to identify ways to improve their community in public spaces. So now I will let the kids introduce themselves and their project.
You can turn around and speak to everybody. George, ladies.
I am George Teseras. I'm in fourth grade and I go to Lakeside Elementary.
I'm Alexander Grashka. I'm in fourth grade and I go to Lakeside Elementary.
I'm Weston Lee and I go to fourth grade and Lakeside Elementary.
My name is Sabrina Dino and I go to... I'm in fifth grade at Lakeside Elementary.
My name is Jenny. I'm in first grade and I go to Lakeside Elementary.
My name is Shonda and I'm in fifth grade and I go to Lakeside Elementary.
My name is Roger Clea and I'm in fourth grade and I go to Lakeside Elementary.
And we are Team Hackers.
Okay, the problem we identified in our community was there aren't very many dog parks here in EGR. And there aren't very many public electric cars. There aren't enough dog parks here in EGR and there aren't very many public electric car chargers. Our solution was to turn Campo Grande Park into a dog park and provide electric car chargers.
Triangle Park.
Our innovative ideas are, we want some electric car chargers to charge electric cars with dog owners. Operating tennis balls for purchase. All the money will go to the City Commission. And we want to have free parking for electric cars. And a free library so people could enjoy books.
The cost of implementation is, the Tesla chargers or electric car chargers will cost $699 apiece. The fountain, the water fountain, combination with water bottle filler will cost $4,755. The chain link fence will cost $7 to $12 per foot. The light posts at the park will cost $5,000 to $8,000 each. And there are already garbage bins and food bag dispensers provided.
For the building in the middle, we're going to have a tennis ball dispenser. And then there will be three dispensers for the dogs, for water, food, and treats. And then there's two bathrooms, a vending machine, and then chuckets on bungee carts and public use. We've created a model of what the dog park would look like. So we will have the gate here and the Tesla chargers on the side. We will have the free little library, a place for dogs to drink from. We will also have a bathroom. We will have a building in the middle of it filled with what you saw on the board. We'll also have the solar panels as these. This whole presentation was to, was to bring the community together and while helping to save the planet. We do have a few questions for you before you ask questions for us. How many of you have a dog? This was our first question. How many of you think it would be nice to have a dog park in EGR? How many of you have an electric car or want one?
Or want one.
Do any of you have questions for us?
Yeah, I actually had a, first off, this was a wonderful presentation. Thank you so much. So where is the competition? You're going to, you have to present this again this weekend, right?
Our competition is going to be at the Innovation, it's Innovation High School. It's in Grand Rapids and our competition is going to be on December 7th.
Okay. How many schools, do you know how many other schools are going to be participating?
I know, we do not know. Oh, it's going to be only if you win them, it goes to higher and bigger every time.
So you keep moving on? Oh, that's exciting. I have a quick question about your presentation. So what are the solar panels going to charge?
Oh, they're going to charge the car chargers.
Oh.
And also the water fountain and the bathrooms and any other things that require electric power.
Very well thought out. Great job.
I'd like to know how you came up with your ideas? Like who, how did you sort out as a group what you would decide for beer ideas?
Well, first of all, we all, so the girls decided that we did not have any dog parks in EGR, but the boys decided that a lot of people have like Teslas or other electric cars, but no public chargers. So we decided to combine them.
The dog park idea actually came from the fact that many people walk their dogs off leash, which is technically illegal here. But not very reinforced. But yeah.
Love to talk to the chief about that.
Had employees to let their dogs off leash and they would always stop.
What were some of the different designs that you came up with along the way to get to here? You know, you've got this bathroom that's also got tennis balls that you're selling and we're all going to get a ton of that change from your $200. I think a great price for tennis balls. What were some of the different kind of iterations that you went through?
So first, we started off with the tennis balls only being 25 cents, but then we knew that wouldn't be enough because tennis balls themselves don't, they cost more, a lot more than 25 cents.
A little tub with three of them would cost like $5, so we raised the prices.
My question is, when you raise the money, how would you ideally like that money to be spent? Do you have thoughts about that?
Maybe on public use.
Public use?
Or the money could be used to help take care of the park.
Yeah?
That's a great idea.
How many solar panels did you have there in your, in this park?
We had three.
Okay. And if you had three solar panels, how many, how many cars would that be able to charge roughly, do you think?
Solar panels are powerful, I'm guessing around four or five.
Okay.
Well, we've been doing a little bit of work here at the city too with, in terms of the electric car chargers. And I know Assistant Manager Doug McAbbe has been looking into the application process.
Yeah, so we are looking at an application for some grant funding and with that feasibility of where we could place these or eligibility, et cetera. So anticipate, we'll probably have some more information coming up in the next several months.
Yeah, and then we also have been looking into, at the Parks and Recreation Department, just did this big plan called the master plan. But they want to see what we, what we think we could do with our parks in East Grand Rapids. And with, along with that process, we did a survey. And a lot of the residents also said that they'd like to see a dog park. And so it is actually part of the master plan. Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
So when we put the survey out to the community, nearly 41% of the respondents said they would like a dog park in East Grand Rapids. And we realized we don't have one and there's many dog owners in our community, as you mentioned. The top part is finding the proper location in Campo Grande or San Lory Triangle could be an option, but we've got to be considerate also over residents that may live near that site. So location is going to be real important as we talk through the process. But we do have a dog park in the master plan and we do have a dollar figure of nearly $500,000 to complete a park. That may need parking to go along with it as well. So many of the amenities that you mentioned, as far as the drinking fountain for humans and the dog at the lower level, would be part of that process as well as benches, seating areas. And you want to also create an area for the larger dogs and the smaller dogs and an access point where you can take them off leash and then enter each of those sites so that'll all be part of that design phase. The other big component is, when you go to most dog parks, if it's just grass, the grass disappears pretty quickly because the dogs are running and digging and tearing up the lawn. And believe it or not, when they go to the bathroom, all that nitrogen also kills the grass. So we may want to look at a different artificial type service in that space, which many communities are doing. But of course, it takes a little bit of money to do that. So I am looking into various ideas and concepts with the dog park. We've just got to find the right location in our community. Any other questions?
Okay, so, um, the next item on the agenda is item number nine. Discussion of process to fill the first ward vacancy on my former seat. And to introduce that is Assistant City Charter Director.
Okay, um, the, the city charter, which governs, uh, essentially is our city constitution, requires that the vacancy should be, um, completed or filled within ninety days. So discussions with Mayor Vali, uh, we both pointed out the process that, that she's, uh, seeking to fill this vacancy. So, uh, the position will be publicized on the city's website, on the Facebook page, et cetera, starting, uh, tomorrow, December third. Um, looking at, uh, taking applications and cover letters accepted through December thirty-first. Uh, these will all be made available on the city's website, also a person here at the city hall. All applications will be reviewed by a subcommittee formed by the mayor. Uh, the subcommittee will narrow down applications and invite selected candidates to meet with the subcommittee. Then, uh, further narrow down to no more than three finalists, if there are three finalists. From there, the final candidates will be interviewed before the full city commission and followed by public comments on the applicants. And then at the next meeting, the city commission will vote on, uh, which, which candidate they will select, um, for, for like the vacancy. Uh, the vacancy for first ward for Mayor Vali's city commission's, former city commission's seat, um, extends through the November twenty-twenty-one election. And that's for formal consideration this evening, uh, by the city commission, uh, votes to approve the process.
And we want to encourage as many people as possible to please, please apply.
So if you yourself are interested, please apply or if you know somebody, uh, of course, they have to live in Ward One, has to be a Ward One resident. Um, but if you know somebody who might be interested or be a good fit, please give them a nod and encourage them to apply. We're hoping to, uh, get a lot of interest, so.
And the city, the city website has a map of all the wards if we are, if people are confused about what their ward is and what's across.
Did you want to take a motion or do you want to have some discussion around it before a motion?
Can we just have some discussion, I think?
Okay. Um, I had, I had a couple of thoughts on this. There's, a couple of them are minor tweaks and partly what, um, what, uh, Mr. Lefebvre just mentioned. Um, first of all, with regards to the, to the application process, I think we, we have a fairly standard application already ready to go that, that people submit. So I, my assumption is that we would use that. Um, and then we might also ask for resumes. I think resumes might even be asked for as part of that application.
Yeah, resume and cover letter.
Okay. Um, so I, I appreciated your clarification that, um, that we would narrow it down to no more than three finalists. I, I would, I think we should try to be open-minded about that. Um, we don't know how many people are going to apply. Um, if there is somebody that, um, the committee, uh, for some reason believes is kind of clearly rising to the front. I, I, I wouldn't want to put other people through a, a process where that just doesn't make any sense. I think we should, I think whoever's identified as candidate should be people that are, that are really seriously being considered and presented to the whole commission for consideration. So I, I like the no more than three, uh, candidates. Um, and then the other thing, maybe the, the one substantive thing that I'd, I'd like us to discuss and consider is whether or not we really want to wait another whole meeting to actually do the appointment after that. Um, I'm, my, I have two concerns about that. One is that it's a vacancy. So I think we should move as quickly as reasonably possible to fill the vacancy on the commission. And waiting another meeting cycle is a little bit of a delay in filling, filling that. Um, the other concern I have is that, um, I, I have a little bit of concern that, that, that a, a timeline like that might lead to a mini campaign amongst the candidates with regards to it. And I'm not sure that that is necessarily productive or helpful. I would hate there to be a situation because there was a multi-week lag where multiple candidates have been presented that all of a sudden you get people. It's not, it's not a campaign like an election, but you know, people kind of politicking the commission for who their preferred person is and what have you. And I, I just, I just don't know that that's a productive process. And so I raised that as a concern as to whether or not, uh, it might make more sense to simply vote on the, uh, to fill the appointment at the same commission meeting where, uh, the potential candidates are being kind of presented and interviewed and public comment. And just kind of wrap that up into a single meeting and, and, uh, move forward. So that's my, uh, those are my reactions.
So, does anyone have any comments? Oh, Kira, you can go ahead.
Well, I haven't, I haven't looked at the, the timeline. I haven't looked at the calendar to see what the meeting schedule is. In between the time all of the applications are accepted, December five through December thirty-first. And then when we, how many meetings are there between the time that they're all accepted and then we are, are very?
I think we'd be, we'd be looking at probably the second meeting in January, Karen, correct?
Yeah, so the first meeting in January is January sixth, which may not be enough time for the subcommittee to sort through. Um, so you'd reasonably would be looking at January twentieth to do the interviews at the very earliest. Um, and then the next commission meeting after that would be February third.
So is the, is the goal, are we looking at trying to make a decision by February, February third? Is that what the goal is?
It's up to you. You could shorten the application period by two, um, to give the committee more time to get their applicants ready for the January sixth meeting as well.
We have ninety days to make a decision, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I personally, I like, I like, I like having it open for a month through the end of the year. I think that's a, to me, a good period of time to make sure that people have the opportunity if they're interested to, to apply. Um, I don't have in my mind a firm, we have to have it done by X date, other than the ninety day period. But I do think that sooner is better, um, for the, for the work that the commission's trying to do. Um, and so that was part of my thinking around the, what are we gaining from like an extra two week lag after the meeting where we come in and have public interviews and have public comment and, and make our decision, do we, do we need that extra two weeks? I'm not sure that we do, um, but I also don't feel super strongly about it the other way. If other people think that that two week period would somehow be helpful to our process.
It may turn into a situation where we're just trying to get the subcommittee to meet, uh, unless we're talking about the, the post-interview. Are we, are we meeting after the interviews, the subcommittee?
My, my question is focused specifically on whether or not, when it come, when the candidates come before the whole commission, assuming, assuming there's more than one. Um, which there may, may not be. I guess I don't know what that process is going to look like. But whether or not we really need to wait another two weeks to another commission meeting to actually vote. I think we can be prepared to vote and I think, part of why I think we can be prepared to vote is, is if we're not, we can table it. If, I mean, if we get there that day and we say, geez, you know, we have, you know, multiple excellent candidates. I'm not sure, need more time to think and deliberate, we can table it. Um, so my, my suggestion for the process and what my motion will be, unless I hear a lot of dissent, will be that, that we just plan on having the vote the same day that we have the public interview before the full commission of public comment. I think that's the best approach.
And Brian, we will have all the information on the candidates prior to that. Am I, that's correct. I mean, it's not going to be, I hate to put it this way, but like the city manager interview, we're. Yeah, we don't like, we don't like that scenario. We're, we're going to have information ahead of time if it's one or five or six candidates to look at or. I'm all right with moving it up as long as there is something built in to, of course, we can table it. Because I, I also feel like this is an important process. Uh, we should have to drag it out, but we should also be careful that we do it correctly and just don't have to rush necessarily. But I don't mind adhering to your suggestion, Brian, either, with the, with the, with the mind that we can take more time if we need it.
One question I would have though is, if, so at the commission meeting where we would do the interview and do the vote, we would, in, in your mind, are you thinking that we would then install that person in the next meeting? Or that they would be immediate, I mean, depending on where we're following the agenda, they could in theory be installed at that meeting, right? That's kind of how it worked tonight. So I guess the question would be, based on the timeline that's currently laid out, would it be one meeting to interview, one meeting to vote, and then the next meeting is the installation of the new person? Or would they be installed the same meeting that they'd be voted on?
Whatever you choose. You can set that up.
So they could be sworn in at the same, same meeting?
Yeah, there's nothing to prevent that.
Because that's another way to collapse the timeline a little bit and be a little bit, um, you know, quicker to get them up. If we did, if we did interviews and public comment on the second meeting, January, January twentieth, then we could vote and install that person on February third, well ahead of the ninety-eight deadline. And still then only, you know, three commission meetings where everybody can have somebody in that seat.
I think initially what I was thinking when, um, I sought to delay between the, um, interviews and the voting on the candidates is, is what happened with the city manager process. Um, but I think to your point, this is a different process because it's, um, the person's going to be a recommendation from, a recommendation from the committee. So we're already going to have a lot of knowledge about this person, um, whereas we didn't necessarily with the city manager slot. Um, so I'm inclined to agree that we could change that if, if people feel strongly about it.
I also support, um, Commissioner Walter's plan. Commissioner Duncan, uh, laid it out pretty, um, along the same lines. I'm thinking this will allow us more flexibility. If we want to be prepared to go ahead and vote at that meeting, we can, we want to table it, we also can do that if we need more, more time to think, more time to discuss. So I think, uh, allowing more flexibility is a good thing.
So discussing and voting on February third, or with the potential of table?
Um, do we need to put a date to that at right now?
My, my, my motion was simply going to be a motion to approve the process that was, uh, set forth in agenda item number nine. Uh, with the one modification that, uh, our process will be that the city commission will schedule a vote on a candidate at, uh, at the same city commission meeting following the, um, public interview and, and public comments before the full commission. Just that last bullet point would be modified.
Hmm.
Um, but I, I think it would be up to the mayor in terms of what, at what particular meeting on the agenda that would be scheduled for.
Right.
So that's my motion.
Anybody else? Okay, so I'm the, the. Okay, so can I get a motion? Oh, you said the motion. Okay, so the support?
Support.
Support, okay. Um, so it come to a vote, so every, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no? Okay, so? So, um, the next item on the agenda is, um, item number ten, conflict of interest policy presentation.
And we have, uh, this evening we have, uh, Attorney Decker, General Counsel from Barnum, to give us a brief presentation and join the conflict of interest policy.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the city commission. I appreciate you inviting me to be here this evening to talk about conflict of interest. I think this issue has, um, been of interest to members of the commission because, as you know, John Huff from Barnum LLP is the city attorney. You now have two members of the city commission who are also attorneys at Barnum LLP. Perhaps it could happen with any other kind of business where you could have multiple people from the same employer serving on the city commission. It just so happens that in this situation, it's two attorneys at Barnum and Mr. Huff is the city attorney. I know that all of you are very familiar with the city's conflict of interest policy. Um, my understanding is that is reviewed with you and you're familiar with that. Uh, because these two members of the city commission are also attorneys, uh, at Barnum LLP. There is the, I think it's probably a slight risk, but there is the potential that there could be a client of the firm, for example, appearing before the commission and seeking some relief, uh, from the commission. In that situation, uh, I believe that the attorney ethics rules would also apply to those attorneys. And so the potential, however slight, exists that their ethics rules may require that they recuse themselves from making any decision, uh, because the city itself is a client of the firm. And if we had two other clients appearing before the city, that might create a conflict of interest. Uh, so in that situation, whether they were applying the city's conflict of interest policy or those specific ethics rules that apply to attorneys, there's a possibility that you might find them being disqualified from acting on a matter. Again, we believe that's going to be very rare, i- if ever, that it's going to come up in this situation, uh, before the city commission. But it's a possibility. And I think the request was that we come in and acknowledge that possibility and explain that we would expect those attorneys, perhaps in consultation with Mr. Huff, the city attorney, um, to address the city's ethics policy. I'm the general counsel for the law firm, so I would expect that if they have questions about the application of the legal ethics rules that apply to them as attorneys, that they would be consulting with me about that as well. Uh, another matter that I have discussed with both of these commissioners is the fact that when they are elected to be city commissioners, and Barnum encourages its attorneys and members to be active in their communities. We're very proud of the fact that we have members of our firm who wanted to be active in the, the city of East Grand Rapids and that people elected them to participate as representatives in the city. Uh, so we're very pleased about that. But when they are elected to serve as an official, they are not the attorneys for the city. And we've explained to those commissioners that Mr. Huff is the city attorney. And the city will look to Mr. Huff for legal advice. And it is his role as the city attorney to provide that legal advice. And the city commissioners, whether it's the city commissioners who happen to be employed at Barnum or attorneys employed at some other firm, when they're sitting as a commissioner, are not the attorneys for the city. Unless the city retains them in that capacity. Um, so here, uh, we would hope that the city would look to Mr. Huff for legal advice. Um, that those attorney commissioners understand that their role is to act as an elected public official and not to act as the city's attorney. Uh, that is something that I've discussed with them as the firm's general counsel of that distinction. Uh, and I leave it to Mr. Huff to provide them advice as the city attorney, uh, on that role. Uh, and so that is how we at our firm address the potential conflict that exists. Whether it's a client conflict or, uh, perhaps some ambiguity about who is the attorney speaking for the law firm in providing advice to the city. And here it is obviously Mr. Huff who is doing that. Of course, Mr. Huff is free to seek counsel from other members of the firm, should he choose, who have areas of expertise, um, that he wants to apply. And I'm confident that you've probably seen other attorneys from the city from time to time, uh, at city, uh, administrative meetings or before the commission. Again, that's all within the discretion of Mr. Huff as the city attorney. If you have any questions for that, about that for me, I'd love to answer them. Um, but I think, uh, that's a pretty simple way of describing how we deal with that at Barnum.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
I know where to find it, Karen.
The government offices, that's right. All right, thank you very much. I appreciate, appreciate your time.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is, uh, item number eleven, the final reading of an ordinance to amend section one point four of chapter one, title one of the city code pertaining to the contents of the code book.
Yes, this is the first of two ordinances, uh, that are deployed for, uh, potentially approval this evening. Uh, both of these ordinances are coming to you with the suggestion of the code publisher for the city, uh, who believes that, uh, what these ordinances do are the way that they would like these two issues handled. They're two separate issues. The first is the ordinance amendment to section one point four, which deals with, uh, what I'll call special ordinances. Uh, those are ones that we are not going to necessarily include in the published booklet, but that they will be available both in booklet form and online in a special ordinance section. Among those is, uh, one of those is going to be the next one to deal on, which is proposing to take the park rules out of the ordinance code and make them just a rule, uh, or set of rules that can be adopted and modified, uh, as a similar reading at the city commission. Uh, other examples would be ordinances that don't get done very often, like the Michigan Consolidated Gas franchise. It could be a cable TV franchise. Uh, while those are fascinating reading, uh, they're not something that gets referred to, uh, very often. So this first one does that. This also, uh, kind of fills a gap that when the final code is brought to us, which we believe will be in the next couple of months, uh, there will not be a gap. Uh, this section will address the fact that, uh, none, none of the, uh, appeals of the ordinances occur. They occur simultaneously with the adoption of the new ordinances. So. So any pending prosecutions or anything of that sort, or any ordinance with maybe obstruction, it'll be clear what rules apply and there will not be a gap in coverage, if you will. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about 1.4. It's just kind of a technical ordinance. And we introduced it, uh, two weeks ago, so it's up tonight for, uh, the time for that final vote.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Huff? So can I get, uh, a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the ordinance to amend Section 1.4 of Chapter 1 of Title 1 of the City Code.
Support.
So we take it to a vote. Um, so all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, say no?
Okay, the second ordinance is a change in the, um, park and recreation area. And, and actually, if you look further down your agenda, under the consent agenda, you'll see adopting the resolution on adopting park rules and regulations in there. That is taking the rules and regulations which were historically in the ordinance book, taking them out of the ordinance format and putting them into the rules format. So what we're doing in Chapter 31 is repealing Article 1, which contained only park rules and regulations, and then removing those regulations, uh, into the special ordinance section, uh, in the next vote. So once again, this ordinance was introduced at the last meeting. It just needs to be adopted tonight. The, the changes, if any, and Mr. Bun can affirm this or comment on this, were, were minor technical changes. The, in substance, the rules are exactly identical, but in these two sets.
Okay, any questions? So do we need a motion?
Motion to approve to repeal Article 1 of Chapter 31 of Title 3 of the City Code, taking the park rules.
Support.
Okay, and, uh, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no? So the, um, last item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve?
Support.
Right, okay. All those in favor? Say yes.
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 All those opposed, say no? No? Great, so thank you so much. The meeting's adjourned.